Alrighty, Ms. Wesley, I think, yes, we are. We're good on YouTube and North Penn Television and our webinar is live. The meeting is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmer. I want to welcome everyone to the October 30th Facilities and Operations Committee. And we'll start our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thanks, Mr. Gilmer. All right. So first up will be approval of the meeting minutes from the September 26th Facilities and Operations Committee meeting. May I please have a motion to approve? Okay, Hey, Riga first and a second. Any comments or questions? Okay, hearing none, all in favor of approval, please say aye or raise your hand. Aye? Okay, great, all right. Meeting minutes are approved. Okay. All right, so, Mr. Schneider, I'll turn it over to you. And I think we are going, if I'm not mistaken, we're going to go to the 10-year capital plan, the informational item under 4A, to start off the meeting, just a little bit of a change in the agenda as laid out, correct?
Yes, correct, thank you.
All right.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending this evening's Facilities and Operations Committee. A little change in the agenda, since two of the items in the recommendation for action or work session are on the capital plan, we thought it'd be best to discuss the capital plan, the 10-year capital plan, prior to the approval of those two items, or consideration of the two items. A few months back, actually, probably around four or five months back, the Facilities and Operations Committee had asked to have the 10-year capital plan updated, revised in any way that the administration saw fit. And also, one of the things that we did do was to escalate the prices, similar to what we have learned about the economy over the years of 2020 through 2023. So the plan has what is shown here. Mr. Linsky, can you show the priority plan, please? This, there are two files listed in board docs. One is the priority plan, which is shown here, and the other is per building. So what we have done is increased the values of the projects to reflect the actual escalation over the past three years of construction cost. And then tried to highlight any items of change since the previous capital plan. The orange bars show the change in item. So anything that's bolded in that row has had made a change. So it would be the priorities may have changed and/or the amounts of the project. Items in the yellow are new items that were added to this capital plan that were never on the previous plans. And then we have a column that has cells that are highlighted in a green color. Those green color cells are the projects that the administration is recommending for the 2024 school year, to be reviewed, planned for this year, and potentially performed in the summer of 2024. The first item listed, which is a new item, is an upgrade to the Siemens Automatic Temperature Control Building Systems. North Penn School District has all of our buildings, with the exception of two elementary schools, the HVAC systems are controlled by a Siemens Automatic Temperature Control System. This system dates back to 1996, and the system is no longer able to be upgraded and is no longer supported by Siemens. So this project, $250,000 estimate, is included in this evening's items for work session or action to, for the boards, the facilities and committees' consideration. It's critical that we change out this software and upgrade it, just like any other computer software, once it's no longer supported, and we could have failure points and we would not be able to recover some certain items. The next item on the list is a roof restoration at the high school. We realize that the high school is planning, scroll down just a little bit, Mr. Linsky? No, no, up, I'm sorry, scroll up. Show the, yes, right there. The high school roofs would be replaced during the renovation of the school. The problem is, is the gymnasium roof, which this $2 million reflects, is in the worst of the conditions of any other of the roofs. And with the concern of the roof with a potential blow-off or even seam failures, the potential of loss of the gym floor is high. So we're recommending that we replace that roof. The new construction or renovation to this space would be minimal. There would be some penetration through the roof, but we can continue our warranties on that roof even after the renovations are completed. This roof would come with a 30-year warranty, and the roof would probably be penetrated somewhere five to six years, depending upon what we are looking at as far as an option is concerned. The next item is a new item, and it's assembly area door hardware. After review of door hardware around the district, we recommend that we replace all the assembly areas in the schools, with the exception of the high school, all the hardware for the assembly areas. Assembly areas include cafeterias, gymnasiums, libraries, and large libraries, and any area where large groups assemble, auditoriums, audions, things like that. We estimate that that work is $3.6 million. The next item for $35,000 is a recommendation to do a professional assessment of our playgrounds. All the elementary school playgrounds, they vary in ages, vary in condition, and they have so many different features. We feel as if it would be necessary to do a professional assessment before we make any final decisions of replacement of equipment, upgrades, or improvements to any surfaces. The next couple of items are chiller compressor replacements and/or yeah, compressor, air conditioning compressors or chiller compressor replacements. And the one item that is bolded in yellow is the replacement of the modular classroom roofs at Penbrook. Those roofs are at their end of life. We are having some problems with them. Virtually any heavy windstorm, we have to have a contractor go out and repair many of the sections of roofs. There are all the projects that we're recommending for the 2024 school year, and that total amount comes to $6,254,612. Mr. Shaka, you want to discuss where we stand as far as capital funds are concerned and how this fits into the finances?
Yeah, sure. So with the list that Mr. Schneider just presented for consideration for 2024, I'm happy to report that we do have sufficient capital funds in our capital reserve plan, or capital reserve fund, I should say, to cover all those recommended items that are in green for 2024. So right now, we have a balance of $8.9 million in the capital reserve fund, and the board just recently approved transferring another $8 million into the capital reserve fund. So that would leave us with nearly $17 million in the capital reserve fund. So that seems like a lot of money, but when Mr. Schneider presents then years '25 through '29 and 2030 through 2034, you will see that that money will be gone in a hurry. There's no question about it. And while we did pass a reimbursement resolution allowing us to pay back the capital reserve fund, if we do incur any expensive expenses relative to the high school project, it's good to have that available balance for things like purchase of land for a potential transportation facility. But again, with $17 million approximately, with a list that's around $190 million, at least we are able to fund what's in the pipeline for 2024 and possibly 2025.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any, oh, I'm sorry, were you going to continue with the capital plan?
No, 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 I'm fine, Ms. Wesley.
Okay. I just wanted to ask the committee if they had any comments or questions regarding this update, because it is a substantial update in terms of real dollars and a look at what we feel we, the administration needs to do in order to maintain our assets, our existing assets, which have always been important to me. I'll start with President Stoll.
So thank you, Mrs. Wesley, and thank you, Mr. Schneider and Mr. Scrockie. I was reading Mrs. Ramit's newsletter that was posted in North Penn Now, and there was some questions about, from some citizens, about are we going to be able to maintain our existing infrastructure, basically, while we are working on the high school? And I'm happy to see that we have this plan and that we have measures in place to continue maintaining our other facilities while we embark on this large project. We don't want to have our other buildings fall into disrepair while we're concentrating on the high school. So it is important, and I know, Mrs. Wesley, you have hammered this time and time again, to maintain our existing assets. So thank you for the information, I appreciate that.
Mrs. Ramit?
I want to talk, I just want to ask a quick follow-up question about the assessment of the playgrounds. What is the, I know that you said that the timeline was within fiscal year, I'm sorry, school year '24. Do you have information about, more specifically about when that will be done, who will be doing it, and is this a topic that we could cover under, like at a future meeting? What we learn about the assessment, what we need to do to bring, maybe we need to bring all schools to a level or bring up to a certain standard? Is there, is the ability to be able to have a meeting to talk about it further, once the assessment's done?
Absolutely. The plan would be to issue an RFP, request for proposals, of landscape architects and civil engineers who have expertise in assessing playgrounds. There are quite a few of them in the Montgomery and Bucks area. So the RFP would be issued subsequent to the board action in November, if the Facilities and Operations Committee approves this this evening, and the board approves it in November. We would advertise the RFP for a period of three weeks. Because it is over the winter break period, we would probably allow a couple more weeks for the professional firms to access the site, review things, so they take and answer proposals. And I would imagine that we could have that discussion sometime either January or February, in time to possibly make some additions to the capital plan, if there's any critical needs in the playgrounds. We could probably make those decisions and get some of that work done this summer.
And because I'm, I feel like I'm a constant, like, trying to find other sources of funding so that the burden is not always on the taxpayer, based on what the findings are, do you, I mean, and knowing that so many of our playgrounds and parks are grant-funded and our community alone, do you think that there is the possibility of being able to do grant writing, joint fundraising with HSAs? And then will this also, because we also do have the HSA sometimes wanting to add additions to playgrounds, do you think we are going to get to a place where we'll have a minimum standard so that every playground, that there's equitable kind of access to equipment and everything's in a good working condition? Are we going to be moving forward or considering policy around their involvement? Anyway, lots of questions there, so I apologize.
No, I think they're all great questions, and yes, I think we can look at every means, every avenue in grants, cooperations with the home and schools. They're a great asset to all the elementary schools and have provided quite a bit of help along with the playgrounds. And that one item that you did bring up is very important to the administration, is making sure that the playground equity is there so that all the playgrounds are of par, not that one school's playgrounds are so much better than another school's playground. So yes, this, this plan would help us make those decisions, help us make those decisions on parity, it would help us make those decisions on what type of standardization that possibly that we want to look at. And at this point, every school has somewhat slightly different, and it's very interesting to see a whole program of what the differences are in each one of the elementary school playgrounds.
Mr. Casa?
Thank you. And thank you also, Mr. Schneider, for that information. You know, in terms of the playgrounds, I'm sure this is already on the list, but we want to make sure that the safety and security aspect is a variable there, whether we go out the RFP or whatever's in the scope, you know, in terms of not just surveillance and other proactive activities, but I know there's also risk management and other opportunities for us to balance along with equitable access and other opportunities to have a more consistent playground system across the district. So I assume that's already, that's already going to be baked into the process, Mr. Schneider.
Absolutely, Mr. Casa, yes, yes, it will. We will be preparing the final RFP in the next few weeks in preparation of trying to get out on the street as soon as possible, and all those items will be included in the RFP.
Thank you. Being someone who's responded to probably 100 or more RFPs in my career, I know that it is intense work and very detail-oriented, not in just reviewing that, but you only get a good response to a request for proposal if you put out a tightly defined request for proposal that has a really good scope, and appreciate that attention detail. I, there's a bit of information for the community as well as insights leading to this question with facilities. What comes out to the assembly door areas, and thank you for explaining for the community and the committee what that means, but the places where we have a mass population of students and staff gathered at any time, families, right? This could be during school hours, after school hours. We have to realize this is the largest school district in Montgomery County, sixth largest in the state of Pennsylvania with 19 facilities. That comes out to roughly $168,000, $170,000 per facility for upgrades of any, of any sort. And to put that in perspective, you know, when you consider that North Penn is still the, you know, fifth lowest tax rate across the county, even though we're the largest, I think it's important for our community members knowing tax, taxpayers know in particular that, you know, the state only provides so much money in special education, guess who makes up the gap? You want good education, community is going to pay for that. You want to have safe schools, community is going to pay for that. Governor Shapiro just announced $8 million, huge amount of money, for school districts to update, you know, through the Pennsylvania Department of Education, Safety and Security. $8 million, that only goes to 166 schools out of 500 in Pennsylvania. That's only 33% of schools in Pennsylvania get that money. And when I do the math, that comes out to $48,000 a school. But just for us to get our assembly areas to further advance, remember, yep, this doesn't mean that every single school costs as much, but my rough math comes out to that roughly, let's say, $165,000 to $170,000 per school. Let's realize the investment that this community is making in our safe schools, right? Not just hardening those, what could be potential targets, but the proactive layered approach that goes beyond that. Let's realize that when Parkland happened, you know, in 2018, 2019, that budget from the state legislature, when everyone cared that innocents were slaughtered, the best they could do is $60 million across 500 school districts. That's roughly what Mrs. Scrockie's better, me, the history major, but that comes out to a paltry amount of expenditures per district, if it was equal, which it was not, across Pennsylvania. And so I say this not as a negative, but to put into contrast and to compare for voters, taxpayers, families, students, staff, how important it is to raise the revenue and invest in this type of security. Our assembly areas alone, this district is going above and beyond. What we have is okay, but we want to make sure where the most people get together, the most amount of times, that we increase the security in those spaces and reduce our risks. And that's why it's really important, $3.2 million is a lot of money, but it's important to realize that we will only attain this level of safe schools and facilities security through the investment of this community of our own dollars. And that's why this district does everything it can to make sure that our dollars go to student excellence and education, and making sure that they're safe enough so that they can focus on their education. And it's really important to realize how the simple math adds up in order to get this type of program. It's a major investment from the community. I thank the community for that and the administration for advancing this. I'm sorry, it's not meant to be a lecture, very passionate about making sure that this community understands it's on us to make our schools safe. The state isn't going to help us, it's on us. So thank you very much, Mr. Schneider.
Thank you, Mr. Casa. Thank you for those comments. So I'll ask a simple question, Mr. Schneider, regarding the playground assessment, will it be shared with the principals of the schools and then also the home and school? To get their input, is that part of the scope of the assessment? Or is it just the physical aspect of what is there?
Well, I believe that the, as Mr. Casa said, writing the RFP, to get good responses, you have to write a comprehensive, good RFP. So I believe that interviews with the principals are critical. They can get the information from the home and schools. I wouldn't expect the professional to meet with each and every home and school, but the home and schools discuss.
Why not? Why wouldn't we do that? This has been a long time coming, so I candidly would, rather than just say, no, we'll get their input, I really think there's lots of value in hearing it from the folks that are engaged. And if we want our home and schools to, you know, maybe provide some financial support, I find that more important for them to be heard in, you know, live time, but that's my two cents on that one.
We can include that. I was just thinking of scheduling all the home and school meetings with a professional could extend the responses back from the professional. You know, it could take some time to get that final report back from the professional meeting with each one of the home and schools.
Well, I'd like to try. Yeah, I'd like to try and still keep to that timeline of the report back in January, if we could.
January will be a little, January, February would be the timeframe, so.
All right, sounds good. Mr. Casa?
Thank you, Chair Wesley. I just want to make it clear, because I didn't make that point, that $60 million from the state of Pennsylvania and the legislature after Parkland was a one-time investment in school security across Pennsylvania. It means $120,000 per district when you spread that across 500. Remember at North Penn that we have 19 facilities, well, 22, 19 educational facilities, and that's coming out just for the, just for the assembly area doors. That's coming out to roughly $165,000 to $170,000 on average. So I just want to make it very plain, this is where taxpayer dollars go to and why it's such a priority here at facilities.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Casa, for the clarification. All right, Mr. Schneider, moving on.
Would you like to go back to the items for work session and action since we discussed those?
Yes, please. The way you would like to proceed makes sense to me.
Okay. So the first item would be for the Facilities and Operations Committee to consider moving to the November 16th action meeting, a contract for the Siemens Automatic Temperature Control Upgrade. The total price of that upgrade is $225,334.
Have you muted? Thank you. So I'll ask, I'll repeat, so I'll ask for a motion to move the Siemens upgrade to the November Board Action Meeting.
I'm moved.
Second.
Okay. Any comments or questions regarding this project? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, say aye or raise your hand. Great. Not any opposed? Hearing nine, that motion passes, so we'll move that to action. Thank you, Mr. Schneider.
The next item is the permission to advertise for the professional playground assessment. We would move that to the November 16th action meeting for the permission to advertise.
Okay, great. So move this to, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any, any further comments or questions about this one topic? Sorry about the noise. All in favor, or all in favor, please say aye or raise your hand. Okay, great. Any opposed? A hearing seeing none, motion passes, so please move that one to, Mr. Schneider, thanks.
Thank you. And then jumping to the informational items, the next informational item after the capital plan is the high school update of some activities. There are no requests for proposals for the current month, this month. I'm sure that in subsequent months, there will be for different services necessary in the preparation of either option one or option two of the potential high school renovation. As far as the activities are concerned, we have bi-weekly meetings with the Schrader Group Architecture and Dewey Engineering and the administration. We're discussing additional schematic design, construction estimates. We continue to do that, even though we have the conceptual information out and ready for the referendum. And also, the Schrader Group and the Dewey Engineering presented a refined schematic design and estimates at the board's work session on October 10th, 2023. The biggest action item this month came on October 19th, 2023, when the board made the decision, approved to hold a special election for referendum, the financing creation of the space renovation of the ninth grade to move to the high school. The decision was that the vote will take place on Tuesday, January 16th, 2024, and the question on the ballot will read, shall debt in a sum of $97,318,376 for the purpose of financing new construction, that includes space for ninth-grade students to be educated on campus, and renovations of the North Penn High School be authorized to be incurred as debt approved by the voters? So on January 16th, that election will take place for the referendum. Then the upcoming events, Mr. Nicholson continues to provide tours to the high school for any member of the public that is interested in taking the tour, seeing the inner workings of the building, and seeing what the building looks like. We have tours scheduled for tomorrow, October 31st. You can wear your Halloween costume, I'm sure Pete, Mr. Nicholson would like to see that. November 14th, November 28th, December 12th, and Uh, November 14th, November 28th, December 12th, and January 9th.
How has attendance been, Mr. Nicholson?
Uh, yeah, good question. So we have had more folks every time we provided a tour. Each Tuesday, we've had more come out. I hope that continues tomorrow. Uh, but we'll see last, two weeks ago tomorrow, we had 29 individuals that were on the tour with me. So it was a nice, robust group and pretty receptive. Definitely a fun time. So I encourage folks to come out tomorrow evening. Wear your costumes. I believe Ms. Wesley, you told me I need to wear my costume. You saw this on the calendar a couple of months ago. So, um, we'll be out there tomorrow evening, six o'clock.
Awesome. Super. Great, thank you. Thanks, Mr. Schneider.
And then, um, Dr. Bauer, do you have any additional items to share with the committee?
I do, and thank you, Mr. Schneider. I just wanted to take this opportunity to potentially address some of the things that I'm seeing circulating. Mr. Gilmer, I'm hearing, oh, there you go. I was hearing some feedback. Um, a couple of items. One, and I highlighted this at the, um, I guess it was the safe schools. Gosh, they all run together. Was it policy? I think it was Policy Committee. Um, first, there's, there's this sentiment out there that there was not, um, there haven't been more than one bid. And, um, we haven't bid the project yet. So bidding the project occurs um, after we are fully completed the design process. Uh, so we are estimating right now, we're talking spring of '25, uh, where the project would actually be bid. Um, then there was, there were comments about architect and that there was only one architect. Uh, that is not true. Uh, we went through a request for proposal process um, with the, um, uh, professional services policy that this board adopted upon taking office. It requires us to go out to RFP every few years. Um, so we did an RFP for Architecture Services in 2018 to encompass the NAP and the high school project. And then, of course, that little thing called the pandemic happened, which totally disrupted everything that everyone was doing. Um, and it delayed the project. However, uh, we had done the full facilities study, had gotten some estimates, had started to move forward, obviously moved NAP forward, but then we put things on the back burner as we worked through the pandemic. Um, so I just think it's important to note that there was an RFP for NAP and the high school. We did suspend that policy for the purpose of architect services, uh, simply because we've already gone through an RFP for this project specifically. Um, it was the commitment of this board. Next time we do a major renovation of one of our buildings, which presumably would be one of our middle schools, we will then go out to RFP again for architecture services. So, um, you cannot bring multiple architects in and have them all go through all these design meetings that we've been going through for years. And I'm, I'm talking hundreds of hours at this point of meetings, just with us, let alone the work that they've been doing behind the scenes in getting all of this ready. Uh, so I think it's important to put that out there. Another thing, Mr. Schneider, and for this committee that I want to, I've been asked quite a bit lately and I want to kind of delineate and explain in simple terms, but certainly understand that we need to be more specific as we move forward towards January 16th, is the difference between option one and option two. And I'm trying to get away from that vernacular and speak more in terms of yes and no. Right? Because now that the board has approved that we go to a special election, what does yes mean and what does no mean? Um, and we have said that not doing anything at the high school is not an option. So it's either yes, move ninth grade to the high school campus and fully renovate. And we've been using the term reimagine, but re-envision what is happening there at the high school and right sizing it for 4,000 students as opposed to 2,400, as it was built in the seventies. Or no, refurbish the existing building and do a systems renovation only and keep our grade alignment the way it is, where ninth grade would be in our three middle schools. So there's a question, option one, or yes, is estimated now with a refinement of $403 million. Option two was estimated at 236. However, that referendum ticket, as Mr. Schneider just read the ballot question, is in the neighborhood of 97 million. And if you do the math, I was a math teacher in my former life, 403 minus 236 is not 97. And so some folks are saying, that just doesn't add up. Why isn't it, why isn't the difference the referendum cost? Which is a great question. And I have not done a great job of explaining that difference. And the reason that it's 403 versus 236 is future borrowing capacity. So if we do not approve option one, if, if yes does not prevail on January 16th, by one vote, right, it needs to pass by one vote, one way or the other. Whatever the majority is, that's the community's decision. Well, then we need to renovate and upgrade all three middle schools and keep our grading structure the way it currently is. And in looking at the cost of renovating all three middle schools in a timely manner, because we certainly want air conditioning and to remove modular construction and right-size those buildings for the appropriate number of students. Given the future projects, we don't believe that we can move forward with, say, 403 minus 97. Because we will still have three major building projects on the docket, ready to go. So that's why the dramatic difference. In, in voting yes, we do believe that some of the pressure of facility needs would be relieved as a result of moving ninth grade out of our middle schools. So I hope that makes sense. Um, I've been asked that question a few times. Mr. Scrocky said he was asked it the other day as well. So we want to make a concerted effort to explain that. I know we've explained it and we've explained these things over and over, but some people are just getting engaged in the process, which is great. We want people to get engaged at this point. Uh, but I think it's important that we take the time to answer all the questions. One last thing, I had kind of three objectives here, Mr. Schneider, was to address the architect and the RFPs and the bids, then to talk about the difference between yes and no. And then, um, finally, I think it's important to talk about the avenues for asking questions. Social media can be a very good thing. It can also be a very detrimental and demonstrative thing. And if people want their questions answered, I encourage you to please, 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 follow the mechanisms that we've put in place. We created an entire website for this. There are, there's a Google form to ask your questions. You can come to school board meetings. We've hosted at least three community forums. We're hosting another one in December. Ask your questions there. Or for goodness sakes, send me an email. I respond to every single one, everyone. Uh, so give me a phone call, send me an email, complete the Google form, come to board meetings. But putting things out there for people who are not involved in these meetings all day, every day to answer probably isn't the best way to get the answer to your question. Um, I really do take great pride in myself and the team being responsive. I fully expect Mr. Nicholson, Mr. Schneider, Mr. Scrocky to respond to any email that is sent to them regarding this project, because that is how important it is. Um, I can't emphasize enough that we are on the precipice of charting a course for the school district for the next 50 years. And I want everyone to be informed and have every single one of their questions answered. So to, uh, just toss something out there into the Twitterverse or Facebookverse or Instagramverse or TikTok or whatever it is, to just let the masses respond, to me, that's maybe not indicative of really wanting the true answer. If you want the true answer, just ask us. Uh, because I will get back to you. I will make the time. I'll respond every single time. Um, so with that, I apologize for the diatribe there. Yeah, but those three points are really important to me to get across in this meeting. We only have so many opportunities to meet with the community between now and January 16th. Oh, and by the way, the holidays are in between. So I know folks get busy. So every opportunity that we have to speak about this and the importance of it for the community, uh, I think we need to seize it. So, uh, with that, I see a couple of hands from the committee. I'll pass the microphone kind of back to Mr. Schneider because he's kind of running the committee as a whole. But if questions are for me, I'm happy to answer them. Go ahead, Mr. Schneider.
Thank you, Dr. Bauer. Um, Ms. Stoll, you have a question?
Yes, so I just wanted to thank you, Dr. Bauer, for that explanation. I think that clarifies a lot. Um, I think sometimes we as a group are so, we, we've been immersed in this and we hear so, um, the same thing a lot of times. And I do think that the one thing about social media is, um, when you read the comments, you hear, you see questions that it's like, I think we addressed that, but maybe we haven't addressed that enough. So I appreciate that people do put questions in social media. It, I do recommend though, as you said, like Dr. Bauer, to contact Dr. Bauer or anybody else on this team, because, um, that way you get the accurate answer. And, um, there are, as Dr. Bauer said, numerous places to find the information online. Um, we have all of our, um, uh, meetings posted on the Remat webpage. It really is a one-stop, um, information spot for everything that we've done. Um, but I do encourage people to reach out if they have any other questions. There is, um, two other, um, questions that I saw that I think we have addressed in the past, but I think it would help, uh, maybe people um, who haven't been paying as much attention, um, that we do emphasize this moving forward. How are we going to handle the students', um, educational experience during construction? Like, I know we did this at NAP. And if Dr. Power, maybe you could give, or Dr. Mr. Schneider, a brief explanation on how we plan on handling that at the high school.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mrs. Stoll. And I, I will say, certainly anytime you renovate a building, it's disruptive. Um, if you're going to continue occupying that building and renovating the existing structure, it's disruptive. However, in this case, dramatically different from NAP, um, is the size of the addition proportionally to the building itself. Right? Is this, if yes is the majority on January 16th, then the addition is two wings that are three stories. And that would be the first building construction to occur, so that we can utilize that space as swing space. So for folks who think, well, my child's going to be in the building um, and they're not going to reap the benefits, because you're saying it's not going to be done till 2030. Well, the first part of the building that we occupy, as a result of the renovation, is going to be the addition. So, yes, they will. They won't reap the benefits of the entirety of the project and the full building once it's completed, until perhaps their own children or grandchildren utilize the space or they, uh, participate from a community perspective. But in this case, at NAP, we added just a couple of classrooms. This would be adding a substantial amount of space to the building itself. Um, and we would utilize that throughout the construction. So that is not to say it wouldn't be disruptive to the daily operations. Quite frankly, that's why this board and this administration, well, this administration recommended and this board supported the role that Mr. Nicholson is in. Uh, there are going to be so many logistical challenges from activities, athletics, parking, uh, campus kind of wayfinding and traffic patterns. I mean, think about the scale of the NAP renovation now. Multiply it by 10 when you're looking at North Penn High School. Um, so it, it will be disruptive, there's no doubt about it. But I don't believe that the construction will impact the student experience as much because the students will be in the new space when the other areas of the building are being renovated. Um, so we, we will certainly try to minimize and mitigate, uh, but there will be disruption throughout the course of the project. There is no doubt. Great question, Mrs. Stoll.
Mr. Remming?
Um, Dr. Bauer, thank you so much for your explanation. And inspired by your comment that you were a former math teacher, when you were describing the difference between the two, um, costs on each, you did start to describe it in the form of a word problem that many of our students, I know, are working on word problem homework right now. Um, and I do think as a future idea for you and Mr. Gilmer, because you all have done such incredible work to be thoughtful and creative and getting out messaging, um, I do think a future video or podcast where you are expressing that as a word problem. I think, let's take it, let's take it to our students in the form of a math problem. Um, this is it. This is so important to understand, so I appreciate it. Also, just want to offer another point of clarification too. Um, I, and I want to thank you and the administration for always, for setting that culture of being responsive. Um, I also want to give credit to you all for all of the information that you have put out. So a lot of the questions that you see pondered in social media comments have already been asked and answered and are available on the Reimagine site and school board meetings. And so I think the Reimagine site does such a great job of being able to categorize it. There are four more, you know, we are pushing out information to get to as many families as we can who can't come to every board meeting, um, or can't join. So I think keeping it out of the social media comments and into the legitimate sources of information that have come out are, are really critical at this point. So, and I'm seeing some people who are asking the same questions repeatedly when I know that answers have been given. So I think it's really important that we all work together. This is really our time to shine and come together, give each, you know, help each other out. If I can't tune in, I can get information from someone else. It's there. Um, and thank you so much for your team to making, for making it so available and accessible. And we'll keep working on that part.
Mr. Casa?
Thank you, Mr. Schneider. Uh, I, I just want to focus on the, the updated plan, which this is the first time it's been updated, um, over the years. I really appreciate that this is the first ever 10-year capital plan that came into existence at North Penn only about five years ago. And so there's an appreciation for that, is it's helped inform and raise the dialogue of not only this board, but the community. And one thing I like to focus on is the air conditioning in the middle schools. It seems that maybe it's just this time of season that it continues to come up. But I believe that there's been a misunderstanding, which has clearly evolved in some parts of our community, uh, maybe on social media, into misinformation about the cost of air conditioning and what should or shouldn't have been done in terms of those expenses. It's in September 2021 that we had a community meeting and specifically addressed the history of air conditioning at North Penn, what this board has done to extend it now to all elementary schools and the remaining middle schools. Any independent, objective, um, constituent, citizen of North Penn can see the track record from the reporter to North Penn Now to even our own Facilities and Operations webpage, information going back to Dr. Dietrich, that explained the strategy and the approach. And it, it's, to me, I'm still surprised when people in the community, um, some, some who bring it up, even in public comments a, as of last month, talk about the middle school air conditioning and refuse to understand or accept the fact that 2021, and this is on public record, people can go see the meetings and read the, the, what our journalists had to say. Mr. Schneider, you yourself said that air conditioning, the estimate for the middle schools in 2016 was $30 million just for the air conditioning systems. And 2021, you're on the record at a board meeting saying it would cost at least $40 million with construction costs, and that's the key at the middle schools. And I ask people to please go look at this. It, it's all laid out. There's no conspiracy. It's fact. So this is 2021. We had at least $40 million just for the air conditioning systems, not for the construction, the re-venting, the removal of mods, significant, many more millions of dollars across the district. I'm sure Mr. Scrocky has been part of these calculations as well. I would just like to take this one opportunity at yet another time of this point of the year to put to bed forever the fact that air conditioning could have been put in any of our middle schools for $10 million or less, let alone more. At what point, Mr. Schneider or Mr. Scrocky, are we at now in a conservative estimate of putting air conditioning into our middle schools, understanding the construction costs that also come with?
Well, I can take a stab at it, Tom, and then pass it to you. Uh, I had this conversation with Mr. Schrader. And to, to draw a parallel here, it's, um, when we were giving estimates on the high school project based upon square footage alone. Right? How many kids, how many square feet will you need? How much does it cost per square foot for renovation and new construction? And then we had these estimate figures. I had this conversation with him a few months ago. And if we, I said to you right now, David, we want air conditioning in all three middle schools, how much would that cost? And I believe, Steve, you and I actually sat down and did some of the calculations in your office. Um, but I believe based upon square footage, size of the buildings, students, we were somewhere in the neighborhood at this point, uh, about 40 million. And, um, that is to upgrade all kinds of infrastructure and put in air conditioning that unfortunately would likely get torn out when you renovate the full building. that unfortunately would likely get torn out when you renovate the full building. Um and so we are committed to renovating our middle schools the right way, removing modular construction and doing air conditioning in the long run. Um and it's just not the responsible prudent thing to put air conditioning in now and then go back and renovate the building itself. When those buildings were renovated in the late nineties, uh early nineties and late nineties respectively. Um so, yeah, unfortunately, I wish we had done it back then. Uh none of us were here involved. Mrs. Stoll, you might have been involved with uh your kids playing sports and uh going to North Penn High School. But um that decision wasn't made back then for whatever the reasons were. And it's just not responsible to do it now before we address the infrastructure and dire needs of the high school. Mr. Schneider, anything you can add? I did my best.
Thank you, Dr. Bauer. Uh yes, um the capital plan as it stands today has the uh cost of the air conditioning for the three middle schools at fifty-seven million and some change. Um that's for the cost of the air conditioning. And as Dr. Bauer said, there are a lot of other infrastructure improvements that would have to be made. Electrical systems and electrical services to the buildings could possibly have to be upgraded. Uh when you put that much additional load on a building, it would be um similar to having a house that was built in nineteen sixties with a sixty amp panel. And you want to put air conditioning in it, you got to upgrade the electrical service at two hundred amps. So it it is a large venture. And as Dr. Bauer said, if we were to do something, spend that type of money now, most likely would have to be replaced during the renovations because the buildings would have to be expanded. Uh chillers would have to be increased in size. And the thing people with a lot of times said, well, why don't you build, do it now for the future renovation? Well, uh a chiller does not run efficiently if it's oversized. Uh and you're going to spend a lot of money for a lot more capacity than if you were just to size it properly. So there are a lot of tang- tangibles uh when speaking of air conditioning. It's not like a residential housing, you just put a window air conditioning and cool room. We have to bring outside air in. We have to exhaust air. We have to, you know, bring um do humidity control in the building. So it is a a very large uh project to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, uh Dr. Bauer and Mr. Schneider. This is not the board speaking. This is our trust administration, cabinet members and experts and professionals who understand what it is we face as a district and and are informing how the board charts that course. Anyone who legitimately goes back through the history of this conversation will see, going back to Dr. Dietrich, that the exact same facts and sequencing has been shared. Nothing has changed. And for those who like to portray otherwise, I hope that our community has it within them to question what those motives might be and to understand where the real independent, objective facts lie and what the plan is. And that's what Dr. Bauer is here for and his team. So please reach out to him and and ask him the questions that you need answers to. Thank you.
Mr. Schneider, also too, uh you know, and I understand, I mean, everyone spoke much better about the history of the air conditioning and the the technical limitations um that result in this being, spending money that we would not be spending it responsibly at this point until we understand the trajectory of where the district is going. But the the thing is, this capital project plan that we have is about all of our assets. And most important is that HVAC is important, but the community isn't aware of all the other um component systems that require replacement, require corrective action that are really imperative and are single points of failure that Mr. Schneider and his team um address on a daily basis. So, y- you know, we talk about A, we talk about AC and it becomes a political discussion. And I get that, but I really think if we could bring it back to the quantitative, technical condition of our assets, of our buildings, I think it it's better served because the administration is very informed. I mean, Mr. Schneider has a very technical background and so is his team. Um a- and y- you know, I I'm ha- we can, I don't think we're ever candidly gonna put AC to bed until it's done or we disposition what we're doing with our middle schools. But i- i- it it just seems to monopolize the discussion about the district as a whole. And that, to me, is disappointing because there's other situations, other systems, other buildings that need much more attention. And we're doing it in twenty twenty-four because we're doing the assembly hardware. I mean, Mr. Schneider and his team and Mr. Skoraki, too, because of the escalation. I mean, it's a, it's a robust, quantitative, technical approach it for a big district, and it makes sense. And so AC is on there. The direction going forward is everything stays on this plan until it is dispositioned and moves to, okay, it's coming off and we document why. Or it's moving to such as the items for NAP did. It comes off and it gets, you know, into that project cost or the high school or or whatever. So AC seems, and and I'm, this, this may doom me, but AC is important, I know that. And the quality of of the environment is very important. But I also feel strongly that the rest of this list is important, too. So I'll shut, I'll shut up now.
Thank you, everyone. And thank you, Mr. Schneider. Great job.
Thank you. Well, that completes um the item for information. The next item would be uh any um comments by the students, Anna or Kate?
I don't have any comments tonight, but thank you.
Neither do I.
I hope all this conversation didn't scare you all. We welcome your input all the time, so feel free to weigh in.
Oh, I've been here two years. You can't frighten me too much more.
Love it. Okay, awesome. Okay. Okay, all right, so um. Mr. Gilmer, is there anyone in the audience wishing to make comment?
Yeah, we do have a couple of people in the room. Uh we just ask those folks that if you intend to speak tonight, go ahead and raise your hand with the interface. In the meantime, um I'm just waiting for some hands, actually. There we go, we got some hands. Uh if you would go ahead and read your uh statement, that'd be great, Ms. Weslin.
Okay. Individuals attending this meeting virtually and intending to speak to the committee should be aware that they are being recorded. In order to meet the requirements of Pennsylvania Sunshine Law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the committee during the meeting. The, to assure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the committee raise their hand electronically and state their name and municipality. Members of the audience are asked to limit their questions and comments to matters being discussed at tonight's meeting or matters that may come before the Facilities and Operations Committee. Members of the audience are asked to limit their questions and comments to three minutes. And this is in reference to Board Policy nine zero three.
All righty. Up, thank you. Up first will be Jason Lanier. Jason, I have enabled your microphones. When you're ready to begin, please unmute, state your name and municipality for the record and begin your comments, please.
Uh Jason Lanier Lansdale. Um I wanted to touch on the 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 uh the referendum language. Again, the, I I think the problem, my problem with the referendum language is, is it creates a a misunderstanding in the heads of people who are going to be voting. That is, they think the night, the high school project is going to be ninety-seven million dollars. What they don't realize that it's four hundred million dollars in cost or four hundred and three million dollars, and the debt load is going to be in excess of eight hundred million dollars. And that hasn't been clearly articulated. And I think this language is carefully crafted to not scare people off with the idea that, you know what, this is going to be, this is going to be uh over the next thirty-two years, this is going to be eight hundred million dollars at least in expenditure for this high school project. And I I personally think it's way over needed. I are, I mean, we need the infrastructure. I don't think we need the cathedral. I don't think that there's, there's been any known benefit for uh the twenty-first century learning model with all the open spaces. I'm not buying it. I don't think it's going to be necessarily good. Maybe some renovations, widening the hallways makes sense, but all, everything else is just, I don't know, it seems more like this is an ego-driven thing than than a necessity-driven thing. Um that being said, the 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 reason why there are all these conversations regarding air conditioning in the middle school and and uh the plans going forward is because that isn't, that isn't discussed in public. That isn't discussed by the board and the admin. It seems to be like, well, you should know this because we we can't do that because we don't know what we're gonna do uh if the referendum fails or what. All of this needs to be more publicly communicated in a, in a, in a, in a hearing. You know, the Act thirty-four hearing serves a purpose. It gets the, everybody on the same page at least of what's going on. And I don't think it's been clear. It really hasn't been clear. I've, I've gone to more of these meetings than anybody, and I'm not sure what the outcome of of the high, the middle schools are gonna be uh pending, pending um one or two option. I d- don't know, yes or no. I don't know which, which, what's going to happen with regard to these. Um uh and ju- just to touch back on the the RFPs for for architectural, I guess, retainer or whatever back in two thousand eighteen, I looked all through board docs, looked in the the historical uh references. I can't find anything to that. I can find something where Trader Group designed NAP, but that's it. And I saw somewhere sort of a, a planning of things that need to be done at at both facilities, but not whether or not they are retained for all architectural services. So I think it's accurate to say this has sort of been a no bid contest or no bid contract. Um. What, what, that also gets to the point of it costs forty million dollars per Schrader's estimation, which he is a smart guy. I'm not saying they're incompetent, but maybe there's other AC professionals who could better understand what they could do to get AC into the school for maybe on a short-term stop-get measure until, you know, seven to ten years ago, when, or seven to ten years from now, when you actually put the renovation on the high school or the middle schools pending whatever the heck's gonna go on at the high school. Again, none of that's been fully communicated. There's no flow chart that says what's happening. It just sort of is, is, is out there for people to kind of guess upon. So I'm saying more communications, maybe an Act thirty-four thing where you can, you can actually get some direct questions answered because otherwise you left it for everybody to speculate.
Thank you, Mr. Lanier. Mr. Gilmer, anyone else in the?
Yes. Up next will be Diana Blistone. Diana, I have enabled your microphone, so when you're ready to begin, please unmute, state your name and municipality for the record and begin your comments, please.
Diana Blistone Lansdale, can you hear me?
We got you.
All right. Um so um I would like to suggest possible um use of the North Penn Foundation to help address the playgrounds, something similar to like the eighty thousand dollars raised for branding of Crawford Stadium. Um I would also like to address the changes in the ten-year capital improvement plan. The middle school air conditioning is not on the plan to be addressed till two thousand thirty to two thousand thirty-four. I know this was uh just discussed, but um air conditioning was previously planned for two thousand and twenty-eight um as a start. Um how are you assessing the disruption to education and safety? Teachers have expressed severe headaches and students getting physically sick. Half-days are disruptive, especially to children who have disabilities. Starting in April, those classrooms get really hot. Um I think the only people who should be rating the disruption to education and safety are the staff and the students in those buildings. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blistone. Anyone else, Mr. Gilmer?
Believe that is it for this evening. No more hands are raised.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so Mr. Schneider, back to you regarding summary of work session.
Ms. Weslin.
Or sorry, action items.
Would you like me to respond to any of those comments? I'm happy to, if you'd like.
If you want to, Dr. Bauer, please feel free.
Um so specific to Mr. Lanier's uh comments and I always try to be uh super respectful, but um first of all, if if I want to put into context here that the board choosing to approve a resolution with a ballot question of ninety-seven million dollars is the responsible thing for the community and taxpayer. What he is alluding to is saying it shouldn't say ninety-seven, it should say the full amount. And I could not in good conscience recommend that to this board in any way, shape or form because that would give you the authority to increase taxes four hundred million dollars beyond Act One. So by lessening the amount of ninety-seven, you're saying this is the amount that we need to borrow above Act One. Everything else, including debt service, we can manage inside of the Act One index, which is your, you have the authority to do. You don't have the authority to go outside of it. So you could, in theory, put that figure on the ballot, that four hundred million dollars on the ballot. And that would, in theory, permit you to raise taxes four hundred million dollars over Act One. But that would not be fair to the taxpayer. Um and I would, Mr. Skoraki certainly wouldn't suggest. It would certainly make it easier for him to balance the budget. Um but he, that would not be the recommendation. So I know that 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 is not what Mr. Lanier is suggesting. I'm not saying that. But by putting that full number up on the ballot, that would give the board the authority to go way, way, way above and beyond what you're doing. So this is the number that is the responsible thing to do rather than ask for the full project outside of Act One. So I hope I uh explain that in a um non-threatening. I know Mr. Lanier is not suggesting that. I just want to explain that if you were to put that actual number on there, that would create all kinds of um flexibility for you as a board to go well beyond Act One, and we don't want to do that. Go ahead, Mr. Skoraki.
Yeah, just to follow up, Dr. Bauer, two other things to keep in mind. In every communication and every presentation, we clearly articulate the total cost of the project being, now the estimate is four hundred and three million dollars. And by law, that ballot question, we really have no flexibility with that ballot question. We can't say electoral debt in the amount of ninety-seven million for a project that costs four hundred and three million. We can't say that in the referendum question, in the ballot question. So I know, I know Mr. Lanier would like to have that included in the question. It's simply not permitted. The only number we can put on that ballot question is the amount of the electoral debt.
Got it. Um and Mr. Skoraki, if you wouldn't mind, one last thing, and I, I just don't want like there to be a conspiracy theory out there that we never went through an RFP for architecture services. Could you give me the dates? And I'll send, or you could send them directly to Mr. Lanier and copy me tomorrow. But I was in all the interviews, the day, and I gotta be honest, Mr. Skoraki is thorough. Ad nauseam at times, we all know that. And I was in all the interviews um for days with Mr. Skoraki. And at the time, I think it was, was it Mr. Kennedy at the time? Um and there was a very thorough process. Some of these board members, these very board members were in those final round interviews as well. I see Mrs. Stoll raising her hand. Um so I know we had an RFP, I know we had, I'm using the number roughly a dozen firms, it might have been more. But I know in round one, we interviewed probably half a dozen. It was a full day's worth and then, or round two, I guess. And then round three was with board members present. So um just the dates of when we advertised the RFP, when that was approved by the board, and then when we actually approved the contract itself.
Yes, I don't have the exact dates in front of me, Dr. Bauer, but I lea- I believe the board authorized the RFP in December twenty seventeen. And we actually started the process in January twenty eighteen. And I think it's important to note that, to my knowledge, at least like in the previous like twenty years, there was no RFP process conducted before for things like architectural services, for things like legal services, for things like financial advisor, for things like auditing services. So I mean, I really have to commend the board, and I think North Penn is very unique with that professional services policy that requires an RFP for certain professional services over a dollar amount. And for the higher-profile professional services, in fact, puts them on a regular schedule every five years. And what that does is regardless of who's on the
And what that does is regardless of who's on the board at the time, it really strips out any political factors or any cronyism or any favoritism. So I really commend the board by putting something on a schedule like that that makes things extremely, extremely transparent. And that initial RFP that was done back in two thousand eight for architectural services, it was to conduct a feasibility study that included four buildings, NAP being one, the high school being the second one, Pendale Middle School and the ESC. And along that process, there was a lot of work that was done as part of that feasibility study to, to study the high school. I mean, countless hours and interviews and team meetings and meetings with teachers and survey information was completed by the Schrader Group. And it was almost like if you're happy with the architect and they have a very competitive price of five percent for the high school, which would be the lowest of all proposals that we received as part of the RFP process. It's not like we, we're recommending the highest proposal. We're actually recommending the lowest proposal and we're very, very happy with the services. It really wouldn't make any sense to do another RFP, to go back to square one, to consider another firm when hundreds and hundreds of hours were already put into work preparing for the moment that we're at now for the high school. Uh, it, it really came up simply because the policy required an RFP for architectural services in two thousand twenty-three. With all the work that the Schrader Group had done from two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty-three for the high school, the board decided to waive the policy and it made sense because all the work that was done already, the high degree of satisfaction with the Schrader Group, and guess what? They were the lowest cost. To me, that sounds like the best of all worlds.
I, can I also just say that um, Schrader Group, you know, they were working the whole time um, during COVID pandemic and all that, but the administration was um, bogged down with other, you know, getting the uh, district through COVID. And so it's not, it wasn't Schrader's fault that we were behind. It was, you know, the pandemic that put us behind. So they were doing what they were hired to do, and um, the fact that we were delayed is not on them.
Thank you both so much for correcting the record there, and, and I really do appreciate the efforts with the, with this policy and, and the efforts that are in place. And I also want to thank Mr. Lanier in advance for his efforts to correct the misinformation that has been put out there. So, um, so thank you for that. Um, and thank you, Mr. Lanier, for your efforts to, to right, to right the wrong. Thanks.
Okay. Any other comments? So, Dr. Bauer, thank you so much because I, maybe your hand was raised and I didn't see it on the screen, but I think that explanation was um, helped tremendously. I, I, I hope it did. It helped me for sure. Um, it, it put it into a, a, a real reality that was dramatic. So, and, and what the board is trying to do. Okay. All righty. Any other comments or questions? Okay. All right. So Mr. Schneider, I, I'll turn it back to you for the items recommended for action meeting, please.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Wesley. Uh, there are two items recommended for the November sixteenth uh, twenty twenty-three action meeting to be considered by the full board. The first item is the Siemens Automatic Temperature Control Software Upgrade and Mitigation Migration, and also the permission to advertise for a professional uh, playground assessment. Those are the two items that are recommended for the November sixteen, twenty twenty-three action commit, uh, action meeting.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Schneider, and thank you for all the work that everyone put into this meeting. It was really informative. So um, I wish everyone, because the next time we meet, it'll be after Thanksgiving. So I'd like to wish everyone on the call and in the community a very nice, safe, peaceful, happy Thanksgiving. Um, and I will say that our next Facilities and Operations Committee meeting will be on Monday, November twenty-seventh in a virtual format at seven fifteen. So do I need a motion to adjourn or are we adjourned?
So moved.
Okey-dokey. All right. Thanks, everyone. Good night. Thanks, Mr. Gilmer.